All right. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. It's about 7:00 PM. Tonight, we have the Plating and Zoning General Meeting and-- No public hearing today. No public hearings. Two days ago, just for the record, was my brother's birthday for first. So, I apologize to my brother--
Which record is that we're making?
It's part of the record.
Oh, okay.
The first item on the general meeting agenda is Plan of Conservation Development, follow-up discussion regarding kickoff the plan update process. In our documents, we got a revised draft and a final red line. A revised red line and then a final draft. I think it's basically, but I do have some notes that I want to just make out there. With regards to LUGO, I could really give a hoot what the LUGO is. But the only I would do if you're gonna do, because I'm weird and only symmetrical, is I would put 2026 at the end. If it's this way, put 2026 there versus there, but if it's not material. What else? I just like stuff that's material. On page-- I don't know how this is. I guess it's question number four. Yeah, question number four. I think five lines on PSC serves as an important reference for the Plating and Zoning Commission. And I would put in applicants and property owners. The reason why, one example I give you is David Genneby's put in that road penny lane. Sorry, where are you?
Is it-- POCD can address a wide range of topics that are important too?
Yeah, PSC references-- Yeah, POZ can provide direction for making decision policies, zoning changes and capital improvements. POZ serves as a important reference for the Plating and Zoning Commission. And I wrote add applicants and owners to consult on making decisions and development applications. I mean, like, my, in my examples, David Genneby's pulled out the one from 1959. And that's where he got the idea of penny lane. That wasn't his idea, that was his idea, came out of PSCD. What's that?
That old map.
Yeah. The next line I wrote down was ultimately, the POCD must be implemented in order to be effective. That word to me is too strong. If you look at the old POCDs, the one from 2006, it said we were supposed to buy all of these houses. They didn't buy any of them. I think about two out of E on the list.
Which section are you in?
The same section.
Same section.
It says ultimately, the POCD must be implemented. So if the POCD said you have to buy a house, and you don't buy the house, is that a violation of the POCD?
I thought he meant that we have to have a new POCD.
Oh, oh, oh.
And we don't have any option of doing that, and that's why it must be implemented. Not like the policies within it must be--
I thought it was the policies within it. I mean, I think that--
I know what you're saying. You can read it the both ways, right?
But the paragraph earlier is why we're doing this.
Updated. Ultimately, the POCD must be updated in order to be effective, like me keeping up with the times.
The PSC typically-- But that, I think that's a different paragraph.
Strike that off.
Yeah, whatever, it doesn't--
Yep.
Okay, so we'll strike.
It says what other topics is addressed, what is actually due. It actually says you have to do something. I just don't want to put something in there we don't do it.
Okay, so we can strike that if everyone agrees to strike it?
Whatever, just--
Yeah, it's fine.
This is one thing-- I know it's, the world changed, and they're gonna put stuff on the website. But if he's gonna do it chapter by chapter, and he's gonna give it to us, I don't want to put it up on the website raw without the commission looking at it.
I'll let him know.
So it says on that one part, first to say inform, blah, blah. I mean, bullet point one. As the planning process moves along, interim products and drafts of the POCD will be posted on the site for review and comments.
Section seven. Seven, first bullet point.
So when we did it last go around, we changed some stuff that like Glenn Chalder did. And then the six of us settled on it.
Yep.
I can just imagine if something was up there.
When we say, as the planning process moves along, once reviewed by the commission--
Yeah, once a-- Once the draft is reviewed and approved by the commissioner, I don't know, you want to do it.
Yes, we'll post it through it.
I don't want to get it posted to the web this day before, this same day, people can't. We get it first.
Right, we want the draft before the public hearing in next year's next summer to be up there for review a couple of weeks before, but that's it. We don't want--
But as you move along--
Yeah, because then we'll get a million letters every month about, well, I don't like this bit, I don't like this bit. It'll be endless.
You guys would be like, I haven't seen it yet.
I wouldn't, I also even wouldn't post chapter by chapter. Let's see, let's see, for argument's sake, we go in chronological order, one to 15. And we're on number 15, I'm saying we signed off on one to 12. And you're gonna get comments from chapter two, and we looked at it a month and a half ago. That to me sounds like we opened up Pandora's box.
Yeah, we'll have to talk to Neil about that is, certainly you want something that people can kind of follow along.
Watch TV, send me that, isn't it?
That's true. Let's change this for now, and then I'll work with Neil on his suggestions. But I agree with you, as the planning process moves along, once the draft is reviewed by the commission, interim products and drafts will be posted on the site for review and comment.
I just don't want someone coming up to us and say, oh, you guys worked on this chapter two in January, or you worked on it in September, and this is March of the next year? I don't like something and then we have to go back and begin again. I'd probably give them the whole shoot match. You're gonna give it to the RTM, the housing commission?
There will be--
Section one, section. It's different because we didn't have the web last time. You know, we just got those packets and that, and we didn't sort it until we get the final version.
Let me ask Neil what's, what he's done in other communities, what kind of--
Yeah, what seems to be the most effective way to keep the ball rolling forward without too much backstepping.
Right, yeah. And then on the bottom, it says something about-- And this is another Glenn thing. H O R work will manage town's prayers, initial status of project review, POCD examine demographic economic changes and trends in the town region since 2016. Glenn Chalder gave us best practices for like around the country. Remember he did the thing down in Charleston, South Hill, and what do I--
You can certainly add something here about--
I wanted, what were best practices? The best practice now is flat roofs or roof gardens and green, green roofs. With gravel roofed at some apartment guys might build. I want him to tell us that.
I think there are opportunities, if you think of rain gardens or drainage or--
Sewer panels and--
So best practices toward area and design the community engagement process.
We're hiring these guys for best practice, bringing outside guys, because we're getting our own little bubble deal. If someone has to do it, it's better.
Yep, we'll add that wording.
That's me. Anybody else have any comments on that?
What comment I want to make doesn't actually emanate from what I've been reading here, but does come from a member of the RTM who is a member actually of the Public Works Committee, and was looking for an opportunity for that committee and probably PZ and H to meet directly with our consultants at some point. And that was not on the schedule, so I would encourage that--
Let me--
I promised Amy's at the fact that too.
Good.
I probably would go to you. Didn't you, were you on the committee by background?
No, no, but that makes sense.
PZ and H--
Yeah.
Meeting with Neil, and we talked about sewer commission, commission on aging.
I promised commission on aging, they would sit there one of the--
And Public Works, did you get that one?
Public Works and PZ and H, yeah.
They're gonna meet with like zoning board of appeals and architecture review board and those guys, right?
Yeah, we could certainly do that. ZBA, ARB, EPC. As I said, could be that does that stuff either before, we'll coordinate.
That's it for--
Thank you, George.
Good job.
You square? Thanks, Neil, wherever you are. That's that, right? Next item on the agenda, deliberation possible decision regarding the following. Coastal site plan review number 384 flood damage prevention application. Number 391 A is an apple, landfilling and regreting application. Number 581 site plan, also known as PL 24-169. Town of Darien, Pear Tree Point Beach, and 139 Pear Tree Point Road. Proposal to reconstruct, fail to regrade and reduce the area of the existing parking lot. Convert part of the parking lot to sand beach area. Install drainage with new touch basins, storm sewer piping to assist in the mitigation. To see a migrating ponding of the parking lot bridge and reconstruct the boat ramp, install new landscaping, construct new paper plaza, picnic area in form of aid subdivision. Invade site development activities within regulated areas. The hearing closed on January 21st. Decision deadline is March 25th. In our packets, we got a draft of that. My, my, my comments first, somebody want to go before me? You sent me these things too early, that's why I don't-- On page three, there's number seven. Is where it is?
Right, you talked about the number of new plantings. Says here--
New plantings are proposed within some areas of parking lot or western Pear Tree Beach. It says they're shown on submitted site plan number. I would just like to rate, there are pretty many 17 trees and I think 2,300 like seagrass things.
So we can add a sentence--
Yeah, there.
Right, here it's number of trees, and then here, plantings-- Can you even say, some of the plantings are near the parking lot, some are in the water.
Yeah, I was counting four, 15 times three, which is 1,260.
Oh, down here, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think that's a significant--
The plugs.
Which, that's seagrass, and the other thing is three, 75 times two, so that's what, 750? The planning, so what's it, what I said, it's not 2,000 loads of seagrass?
Net increase of 20 trees. Okay, so we'll put that in between, right before-- Net increase of 20 trees, seagrass, some in the water. These are as shown on the submitted site plan.
That's C, C for--
One, four.
Cool, cool. No, that's no truth. Then the next item was, and I didn't really--
The next bullet point height is missing a T.
Thank you. Spell check doesn't catch that, but--
Adam, did I get you?
I did, I did, because I read it through spell check, and it didn't flag on mine either. I think high is the word.
It is, it is. The next one was, it talks about the fence, four foot high fence on the frontage of Pear Tree Point. Isn't it between the front gate and the end of the street? It's not the whole thing, right?
It's the gatehouse over to the corner.
It's the gatehouse to the corner, not the gatehouse--
Garden already is--
Right. So I just wrote side of fantasy lawn, height for Pear Tree Road frontage, between blank and blank. So between the gatehouse and, let's call it the southeastern corner, whatever the corner is. There it goes. And I got yelled at by my wife for getting my son Steven a joke.
Cop show up?
It was, oh, that's where my kid was over the wall. Yeah, it is. With the fence there. She's like, what kid, what kid, my kid for? I was like, sorry. Do you have to say anything about the dumpster in number nine when that comes up?
Well, they did say--
That comes up later?
Voluntarily, which is--
Yep.
Okay, I don't know if you want to say--
I guess we can move into this section if you want.
I would just add the word, it says in the quarter, will be constructed with pick and tilter, and the dumpster is not being constructed. I don't know. Then the next paragraph down, it talks about the boat ramp. This is a personal issue, because I have a boat, but I'll keep my mask this year alone. It says to reconstruct at a proper slope. It's not improper today. There's nothing wrong with it, but it looks fine. I would just make it an improved slope. Because we're saying that the existing ramp is wrong, but that's not the fact.
Yeah, we need, we need to keep that door open.
Yeah, we have to have one door open.
One door.
It's a public meeting. Ask fire, you know that.
I'm not a booker. He's a rookie.
So just make it an improved slope.
Okay, improve number 10, yeah?
Yeah, change the word proper to improve. And then we just talked a second, somewhere near bullet point 25 or 26. The time period, I think, where-- They're in standard hours, Monday to Saturday.
You want to put that more as a condition?
You usually put that as a condition, right?
Okay. Put that. Yeah, then I guess after, incentive controls, which is B as in boy, on this section. Just add in that section 856.
Right, what you had said, Steve, is condition F from the bulletin draft resolution should be included as, I'll call it, the new paragraph C. And that reads as follows, as noted in section 856 of the Darien zoning regulations, no processing, sorting, crushing, mixing, fabrication of rock or gravel, or construction debris, or other similar activities shall be engaged in or be operated on the site.
Just, I'm afraid those machines are gonna be loud, ripping up the parking lot. Did the neighbors ever go to the neighbors?
Yeah, that is what it is.
Well, that's right, I want the time.
It's not any different than landscapers that are in the neighborhood.
They're doing their constructions on, as it is.
And on, yeah, 7:00 AM on a Saturday.
They'll try to make color for those. I think that's it for me. Yeah, that's it for me. Anybody else?
I had on 12, on page three. On 12, it says a check valve will be installed in the main line connecting the parking lot to mitigate stormwater backup of the system and prevent pondings in the lot. I, I don't know that we're gonna be able to prevent it entirely, so I would change that word prevent to like alleviate or something like that. That's not as definitive.
Reduce or minimize?
Yeah, reduce, alleviate. Yeah, just because I don't want somebody to consult this document--
Hey, there's water in the parking lot.
Years from now, say, they said they were gonna prevent this. That's not what we're saying.
Yeah, they paid anybody a box to fix the parking lot, and it's still, it's still--
That was all, my only comment.
George?
All good.
Adam?
Good.
We'll start. Got it. Did you want, did you want something on construction hours in here or not?
Can you put it in there, whatever the standard paragraph is?
Okay.
Since we can state the hours, so it's there in black and white.
We got, so like, we have a new C, so C moved to D. We could put after D, E, standard hour, eight to six, Monday to Friday.
But it's really sunrise, isn't it sunrise and sunset?
But if you say eight to six--
It's fine, you can say whatever you want, so.
Eight AM to 6:00 PM.
In the summertime, sun sets at six thirty in the morning. Probably more like eight to six is better.
Yeah, and that most, I mean, most construction guys are out of town at four o'clock.
Yeah, unless you want to say 7:00 AM.
Yeah, I don't want to, like, if Public Works is used to working and starting at seven, I don't want to say suddenly, we can't, we can't start till eight. Like--
Right, yeah.
It's just a reasonable factor with what their normal bookend hours are, like that.
Say, say seven or six.
7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Yeah, most, depends on the contractor they hire. But at least if you say upfront, here's your hours, oftentimes what they'll do is, you know, in the 6:30 to 7--
Yeah.
You know what they've done at the elementary school, start staging, the guys arrive, you get your duties for the day, and at 6:59--
Yeah.
Okay.
7:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
They tend to fight on that number, a little bit based on corporate districts.
Well, that's what I want to ask, that's what I want to ask you. Relative to that, for argument's sake, let's say they get bad weather, right? And because of our constraints in this thing, because of the hours and the days, whatever it is, it's gonna push them back a month, and they're not gonna be done by May 1st. It's gonna get done, you know, June 1st. We're gonna get yelled at because the beach doesn't open up, because we didn't let them do the ramp.
Six days a week, seven days a week, leave it up to--
That's what I, that's what I don't, because it's hard, I mean, the beach has to open, I don't want it.
Yeah.
And the boat ramp, boats go in the water, I think.
And I think it's doubly important for the neighborhood to have minimize it and condense it, because it's also great island parking. So it's not just the beach, it's also, right now, it's where people are supposed to be parking for great island. So the faster this can get done, the better.
Why are we doing that?
Then let's just not, I, I, they're gonna operate within their reasonable, I don't think we need to have it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just throwing it out there because we usually do have it in there, but I don't want to-- I mean, if we get something for the schools--
This kind of needs to go fast. It'll be more disruptive if it doesn't.
We gonna let them work on Sundays?
Nope.
Yeah, you live close, you're right there.
I, I don't think most, most contractors are not working on Sundays.
The only thing we do, at, at Toki Beach Club, we let them work on Sundays with interior painting. There's no painting.
Yeah, now this is all noise.
Paintings does not make any noise.
I don't think they're gonna need to work Sundays.
7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday.
Jeremy's like, let's land this plane.
There's no right answer, because we don't--
Seven to seven.
Sounds good.
Monday to seven.
Monday through--
Seven to seven.
Seven to seven, Monday through Saturday.
Can't do it more than that, right? Okay, any else? You square? You can approve this, right?
Yes, amended.
If they make a motion to approve as amended, Amy makes a motion, Adam makes a second, moving to zero. After zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is flood damage prevention application number 451, landfilling and regreting application number 580, also known as PL 24-165. David and Louise Bolton. I think it's kind of close. 150 Pear Tree Point Road, propose to construct a new pool patio and maintain walls and perform related site development activities, including regrading of the property to accommodate the improvements and installation of stormwater management. Hearing closed on January 21st. Decision deadline is March 25th, 2025. In our packets, we got a draft resolution. I love to get it. The only thing that I wrote was on number, I think, in number 12, and so I'm doing propane tanks, and I add it in accordance with the regulations. Because that's where, we don't have to say it has to be underground. It's allowed to be hidden behind something, where it's not visible from the street. But if they decide often they can't do it, they stick a 250 gallon tank above ground. But you can see them alone, that's not me. And do you need, on D as in dog? The commission hereby requires that the sanitary sewer-- Here, that sanitary sewer, if the septic system fails, do you need to say town sanitary sewer connection? Is there any other type of sanitary sewer connection? It's the last sentence in that paragraph.
Yeah, the septic is not a sewer. Sewer is a sewer.
Right.
Couldn't hurt to put it on.
Usually we wouldn't comment, but in this case, they put it on the plan.
Right.
So in 20 years from now, you're gonna be like, well, it was on the plan that the commission-- So we're saying, okay, you, the applicant put it on the plan as a condition, we're holding it to that condition.
Yeah, you made that, you made that black and white as appropriate. Yeah, so number one, if the septic system were to fail, fail the property will connect to the applicable existing sensors, so we'll get a Pear Tree Point Road and do a, B-100A septic system. That's what I'm saying, that's all. That was it for me. Mike, any? Adam?
Straight forward. Yep.
Okay. I don't know if you made that change or not, but motion to approve as edited. Amy makes a motion, Adam makes a second, over.
Five to zero.
Okay. The next one I'll recuse that, so I'll just step out of the ring and then-- Is it gonna be long, or should I go home?
No, not gonna be long.
We did the longer, it was just a large number of small edits we wanted to get incorporated.
I'll be back. I'll go text my son.
Tell him to go to the lawyer. Okay, moving along, site plan application number 312, special permit application number 340, flood damage prevention application number 448, landfilling and regreting application number 576, PL-24-130 TCNE Metro Development Inc., one, 1622 Thorn Dale Circle and tax lot number nine, as shown on assessor's map number 39. This is the proposal to raise five existing office buildings on the subject property and to construct a new residential community consisting of five multifamily buildings, garages, amenity areas, driveways, parking, drainage utilities, landscaping, and to perform related site development activities within a regulated area. A total of 175 apartments are proposed. The hearing was closed on December 9th of 2024, and the decision deadline is February 11th of 2025. We deliberated this last week, as you may remember, and then in our packets tonight, we have the revised, revised approval that Fred put together. Oh, I can't see the red line on my, on the PDF. Should have thought that, well, anyway. All the changes that I noted from last week were incorporated into this. So I think it's, as it's drafted, it's pretty good. I don't know that we need to go over each item point by point, since we spent a good amount of time already doing this. So that being said, I'll just go around the room and see if there's anything-- You know, the changes were, if you recall from last week, the changes that we had done were just more than one or two that we didn't want to approve as amended, so we wanted to just see another draft of it. But they weren't material changes at all to this, and we were all in agreement as to, you know, the quality of work done here. So do you have any further edits or anything that you'd like to see that we've done? Okay, going down. George, how about you?
I'm, I'm fine, but I did want to point out that there was no change to the language about which I raised a question, which was the template illustrating the-- If I could find it in the traffic provision here, I would do that.
For the fire truck?
I think it was related to the fire truck. It's actually indented somewhere.
That's on page 15F, number three. The project sponsor shall adjust the proposed curve radii.
F, okay. Two minor--
Maybe that is not it.
No.
No, it was--
Oh, it's four, I think.
Four, correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we decided that that was language that was picked up directly, and that's why they kept--
That was gonna be confirmed, or, I mean, it's a sentence that, to me, makes no sense, which I wouldn't want to stand, have that stand in this thing. It makes sense to you guys?
Right, that, so it's, the way it reads is turning templates shall be provided for garbage trucks entering, traversing and exiting the subject property.
Now, I'm, I'm back on the earlier sentence. Fire truck turning templates--
Okay, the fire truck turning templates-- exiting Thorn Dale Circle to Boston Post Road southbound shall be illustrated to the rightmost southbound travel lane on the Boston Post Road. So that language was, we confirmed that that language was lifted directly from Greg Del Rio--
The letter?
Greg Del Rio's letter.
And if somebody comes back and said, I don't think they, they illustrated to the rightmost southbound travel, and you'll know what to tell them, because it makes no sense to me.
Yeah.
Just because that road has two lanes.
I, I think it's the word illustrated myself, but anyway, if you guys can handle it, I, I'm not gonna waste more time on it.
We think it, we think it means actually placing the template that's shown on the plans in a different location on the plans. So he's suggesting that the template be illustrated differently than it's currently shown on the plans. Is the way I read it.
Not a physical demarcation on the road.
No, it's just gonna update a plan.
Right, correct.
And shift it to the right most.
Yeah, we're gonna change an error on, on one of the plans.
Yeah.
Okay, enough, fine, good, go with it. That's the illustrator, I guess.
Drawn, amended. You're good? Okay, then I would look for a motion to approve as drafted. Mike makes a motion. Amy makes a second.
You haven't done anything here.
It's okay, I'll find my--
All right, all those in favor? All right, five, nothing. A one, two, four, nothing, excuse me. Jamie's not here tonight. Four, nothing. Approved. There you go, guys. Thank you. Good luck.
Enjoy the illustrator.
Yeah. I'm gonna walk down the road for that illustrator.
How's he likes to come back?
Someone sent this, uh-- Have you sent Steve back?
If you see him out there.
Yes, yeah.
Fearless leader.
Uh, under the dock.
Yeah. Do you see him? You don't have to watch, it's fifteen minute.
Your hands on a, not a big thing.
I'm good with deliberating, yeah, just keep quiet. I'm trying to call Fred to find out what I need to watch tonight. I did my watch.
Your side could have passed that on to you, right?
I've been so busy, I just.
Want me to re-announce it, her voice?
Easy, sir. I like my voice. We're good. All set?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Even under the dock.
What else? Next item on the agenda, coastal park, um, delivery ship coastal site plan review number three forty-nine A's and Apple floods, damage prevention application number four fifty-two, also known as PL twenty-four dash one seventy-one. Ninety, Pear Tree Point Road Home Motors Association, LLC, Zero Pear Tree Point Road, proposes to construct and install a shared community dock and fix ramp here, platform, form related site top activities within regulated areas, including the construction of retaining walls. Did you get the much as you wanted to get, Mike?
I, I'm going to, we're not deciding that though.
Correct, so it's kind of sort of straightforward. We had to see it because it's a typical dock, which we see a lot of docks. It has a little bit more inward, landward stuff.
It has that giant platform, giant proportional to other docks.
Right.
That Tim de Bartolomeo, the engineer from Sound Engineering, said they're gonna put concrete on top of that existing retaining area. They'll create some steps down from the road. The dock has been approved by the state, but the PNC regulates the landward pieces of it.
And, and they're not putting a retaining wall in, in front of the existing soft piled rocks, right? Is that a new retaining wall going there?
No, they're just rebuilding the, the stone wall that's there.
Yeah.
Because I, I mentioned the part about, most times you see the riprap in it, and the steel plates going in, and concrete behind it.
It's just plated stone, there's no, like, concrete support on that wall either.
Well, that, that's the C-wall, there are two other.
Concrete slabs.
Landscape walls that are actually holding back material as well.
The road, right?
Um, one up towards the road and one a little bit further down, in fairly close proximity.
That just so has to be engineered. Which is not our department, anyway, it's who else?
I, I don't believe the wall for over three feet in height. If they're less than three feet, there would be no reason they would need to be engineered.
But aren't they holding back the road?
I don't believe so, no.
We'll have to check on that.
My big question or issue was the staging, not really the staging. It's just the construction on the road, not to block the traffic.
I think the fact that they, they represented that they own the properties across the street, and that's where everything is gonna be staged and.
Yeah, they're gonna park it.
Yeah, parking, materials.
Because there's just a regular chain, like fence there now, that gates it off.
Yeah, and they have that little access to drive at one, like, technically a curb cut, it is, I guess. Yeah. So, I was fine with that, the fact that they're gonna have ample space to stage trucks.
They put fifteen white vans in, it doesn't matter.
Yes.
On the grass.
Yeah.
Okay, there was nothing super, did you guys say anything you missed on that one?
I hope like so.
So we should have a draft resolution ready for the next meeting?
What about anybody else?
Well, I'm, I'm still leery of the traffic, really the parking that I think is gonna happen on Pear Tree Point Road as people come and go, dropping things off perhaps, leaving their car there while they go out to their boat, they're dinging whatever. Um, and, and I, I, we're gotta be hypersensitive to Pear Tree Point Road right now, all the pedestrians, all the traffic, et cetera. So I, I've got to overcome my reluctance concerning that issue. I don't know what, I'm not gonna propose anything for it, to cure it, but.
There's, there's a lot of no parking signs when they, right before they opened up Great Island, all down Pear Tree and Long Neck, they really peppered a lot of no parking signs. So, it should be there, whether it's, somebody needs to come around and police it. But for the most part, nobody has been doing that. People from observations, if they park somewhere, they're parking up on Harbor Drive. Harbor, and then walking down, friends in. But they're not parking on any parts where people, where the town has put up signs.
Let me, let me ask you a question, this is, it's for next application. There's, there's, there's two other parcels that are gonna be developed in the front, right? And there's a road that goes to the middle. And, and the, the dock is here.
There's not a road that goes through it, there's a walking.
Right away.
But no, that, when the houses are built.
I don't think so.
How are you gonna get into these two houses on the side?
They, driveways from Long Neck, and then two driveways from Pear Tree.
So, right, so what, this is not, this is a walkway, it's not a shared driveway. What my, what my thought was that later, the association could grab, because I keep saying golf carts, like, if you ever go to Toki Beach, not Toki Beach, the.
Roanoke Bay.
Roanoke Bay, there's golf carts that park on that road all the time, but it's a private association. If you have them put golf, like, four golf cart parking spots here, so you take it a little bit of land away from this lot, take a little bit away from that lot. But that's something that happened down the line. But I, 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 I agree with you, because when you go out on a day sailing, you've got six of those white vans.
Yeah.
And it, and, and when you go to.
Just human nature is to use the easiest point to take the stuff down to the boat and.
Because at, at Darren's Boat Club, when I pull up with my stuff, I got all kinds of stuff that's got on the boat.
But you're traveling across town to get there. These folks are, they're right, they live right there. They live right there, so even if they took their car down to unpack, it takes thirty seconds to take their car back to their driveway.
Around, all the way around.
But they're gonna have guests and friends and stuff and such.
Because remember, that's not, that's not a mooring dock, that's, that's a, that's a, get on your, your boat's out in harbor. You're gonna come to the dock, pick up your buddies that are staying at your house for the weekend. They're gonna jump on the boat and then go home with you. I don't know, I mean, I, that's, I saw the same thing. You know, honey, I'll go get the boat and bring it around. You bring Mr. and Mrs. Bosante, we'll meet at the boat in fifteen minutes.
And there is also a public parking, and you need a permit to park there, at Pear Tree. You know, is that something that is, so maybe it's just.
Does anyone in that neighborhood have golf carts, or my dream is something?
Yeah, I, I would just add that the commission did envision a small stone dust parking area in connection with the previous subdivision approval. So if perhaps it does become an issue, maybe the commission requires that they come back and establish that small parking area.
Where, where did we, where did we envision that part?
Directly across Pear Tree Point Road, or within the Eastman area.
That's what I'm talking about.
That we flared it out at the bottom.
Yeah.
It's flared up marginally.
Yeah, not a lot, but we could have expanded.
And the topography is high, so it's not like they're like, coming out onto the roadway.
But are we ever gonna, if those houses get built out, it's a break, we're never gonna see those things again.
Nope.
But you can't, we can't switch it, we can't.
Well, the commission couldn't say, go ahead, we encourage you to build the walking path and the parking area.
With land?
They, they said they didn't want to build it as part of this, because it's just one house. But we can certainly say, go ahead, build it. Give them approval for it, but not require.
When they first submitted the application, they actually did include the parking area.
This application.
This application, and they were running into some issues relative to regrading that area and just some of the site plan details, so they said, they withdrew that. And, um, the plan, the plans you reviewed did not include that parking area.
Well, let me, let me throw an idea at you. In order to get the CO for the fourth house, that parking area has to be installed.
But that has to be a requirement that runs with the land.
Yeah, that, that parcel's not good for roads.
The bike that you have at that apple is right now. Because you're not.
Because, because the, the applicant's Pear Tree Point Road, the house is gonna be.
I mean, I guess, if there's a land, it's, it's in the CAM review, those, those lots are in the CAM review. Right, those lots are in the CAM review. I mean, but from a real estate perspective, you're representing a buyer, and then they should know before they purchase a property that this is, this is a, a potential restriction on the land. That should be well notified in advance of the purchase. As opposed to, they purchased the land, then they go through their application, and then we go, hey, surprise, we don't, we want you to do this. I don't know, like, that doesn't sound good.
And the applicant is the homeowners association.
Correct.
Doesn't really own anything, it's representing people, but.
How do we force them to build that, how do we force them to build that thing?
Or I think we can tell the homeowners association that we want it built, and then that'll be a condition to build the whole thing.
Sounds like, I mean, was it part of the approval when it was subdivided? Was it a part of the subdivision? Does that reference that map on the subdivision that?
I could've sworn we had parked it there.
Yeah, I, I, I know the commission definitely envisioned it, and there was, there was language in the approval relative to the parking area. I don't know off the top of my head if it was a specific condition of the approval, but it wasn't.
We need to revisit that, and maybe we need to revisit that.
Well, you can start to write up, you can start to write up the resolution, and then we can have that next time we add a paragraph.
We'll look at the original subdivision approval, see what's set aside. Because it could have been like the dock, the concept was approved, the details, as you said, there might be regrading associated with the stone dust. And I think Fred asked the applicant's attorney, Lenny Raymond, hey, give us any details of that. And when he said, ah, we'll just withdraw.
Yeah.
Right?
Right, correct.
Because they don't, I mean, they, they gotta go through all the process, and they're, they're worried about the waterside. So this new guy that's building the dock, the guy that's renting that house, anyways, can use the dock as a center.
They, they had originally envisioned it, meaning as part of this most recent application, as demoing about a hundred feet of that retaining wall, and making a, you know, a fairly large parking area. Probably, to me, it looked much bigger than would be needed for that type of use, just the dock across the street, but.
But it's expensive, it takes a lot of time.
Yeah, but I, I think it's a real safety issue, so.
Me too.
I would urge them to, I don't know how logistically that goes, but in order to get my protest, my vote, they would need to come up with something like that. Especially if they've already visited that issue and, and simply rejected it, I think they have a good one, but.
Do that, I mean, I mean, to, to your point, Fred, a lot, that happens all the time. You ask people for details on something, they say, ah, just take that poll, you're a patient. Yeah, and you're like, oh, yeah, it didn't exist. But they were supposed to build it as part of the original Ford lot subdivision.
We'll, we'll double check on it.
Any other comments on that, Mike? You cool? So I would instruct staff to draft a, an approval of that thing, subject to a couple of conditions. Okay, next item on the agenda, propose ADU for Epple Real Estate, LLC, two oh nine West Avenue, ADU twenty-five dash one. It's our first ADU of the year. I printed out my stuff on the application, which is someplace here.
Pull it up on the screen if necessary.
It's, well, let me, can I ask you a threshold question on this thing? And I should, I'm sorry, I'm multi-asset pool. When you look at the webpage, it says fourteen files. Are there supposed to be fourteen attachments? Because I only printed out like six. Is that supposed to?
Yeah, I don't know why it would be showing fourteen, there's not fourteen attachments in part of that application.
Because I was looking for more.
There's fourteen items, did, not every item has a, like, soil, I think some of them were put on by default. Like, you put in an application, there's storm drainage management plan, soil erosion settlement plan, landscape plan. They didn't include any of those, so there's no actual file for them. But there's fourteen.
Slots?
Slots, and, but there's only like six files here, so you didn't need all of them.
Okay, so the other one's eleven files, and there's only three slots.
Exactly.
All right, thank you.
Like homeowners authorization, there's no homeowners authorization for this, so it's not needed.
Okay.
It's misleading, but.
That's all right. My only concern with this thing is, the house in the front is a professional office and a, um, a house and an apartment today, right? It's, it's gotta be a grandfather home office used from way back when.
That's right.
Because now we have to have those things approved if someone wants to put a home office in their house, wherever it is. And then, if you convert, so right now, there's two uses on the property. If you convert the garage in the back to another property, now we got three uses on the property. And if that house gets vacated, or if the office building gets vacated, and they move out, to me, that's not, it's owner usually today, to me, that's not a viable, rentable spot. So I don't know if it'll ever be office again. So you're gonna switch it to something else.
What's not a viable rental, rentable spot?
I, I don't think if, I don't think any third party would rent the first floor of a house for an office, basically. And, and maybe it's grandfathered in, if it's a change in use, then they have to come back again. And it's left three uses there.
Can I just give you a, a quick overview of my understanding of this?
Sure.
Sure.
So, yeah, this is an ADU for two oh nine West Avenue. It's, it's located in the R one fifth residential zone, so it, it is a residentially zoned property. Kent Epple, the owner of the property, is here this evening to, you know, potentially answer any questions or concerns of the commission relative to this. But the proposal that he has put forth is to convert the, the second floor of the detached garage at the rear of the property, which is now used for storage above, above three garage bays.
Three garage, three car garage.
Correct. So the ADU itself would be about six hundred and thirty-one square feet. So Steve, you know, as you mentioned, the, the principal building at the front of the lot is office use on the first floor, and then a, a small residential apartment on the second floor of the building. The residence on the second floor of that building is, is just under nine hundred square feet, from what we understand. And then the office on the first floor is about one thousand sixty-four square feet. There are seven surface parking spaces behind that, that principal building on the lot, which does meet the requirements for the parking for both the residential use on the second floor, as well as the office use on the first floor. And we note that Kent's business, ERA, ERA building and design occupies that, that first level of the building. I would, I would look at that as owner occupancy of that building.
For an office, I think office is a right.
Correct, it would be a, a business owner occupancy use. And I think when, when the commission, when the commission approved the language in the regulations for this ADU, one of your main concerns relative to owner occupancy was maintenance of the property, right? So making sure that the property would be maintained over time.
My biggest concern is that I don't want this turned into investors, an investor opportunity. That's, that was my biggest concern.
That's why I turned off it, it's got nothing to do with me.
It wasn't necessarily maintenance.
It was about two family houses that are.
I don't want investors coming in here and carving things up, and not having it mistaken as a resident, as a community member, and renting things out. That was my, that was my biggest concern.
Yeah.
Gotcha. It's a hundred percent, yeah, it would have made.
So the, the, the principal building on the site was built in nineteen twenty-seven. And basically, since it was built, it's been used as, in, in some fashion, as, as a commercial use site. We understand that it was originally used as a general store. It was occupied by an oil company at one point. Seymour Servane occupied the space at one point. And now, of course, Kent's business occupies that first floor. You know, it's a decision that, it, it is a little bit of a unique situation here that, that the commission is gonna, is gonna need to make a call on.
That's what we're looking at, you know?
Like I said, Kent is here to, you know, answer. Like I said, Kent is here to, you know, answer, answer any concerns that you might have. One option that, that the commission could have here is to place a condition on the ADU approval that, um, you know, for example, you know, there'd be no more than two dwelling units on the property at any time. So that would include the ADU in the back and the apartment in, in the building at the front.
So on our tab, the commission will improve, say what, two accounts?
So two, two dwelling units, a maximum two dwelling units on the property. One being the ADU, one being the existing apartment in the front building. Another condition of approval could potentially be the conversion of the principal building to a single-family residence.
Yeah.
You know, unless, unless that bill, let's say Kent sold the property, unless that house was converted to a compliant single-family zone, that ADU would, the ADU use would, would cease to exist.
Would you kick out the tenant? How do you do that? How do you get him out?
It would be a condition of the lease. If, if they were to sell the property, then their lease would terminate. It would, it would, then obviously a certain reasonable notice.
Right, we had, that means we have to see the lease. We're not babysitting leases. Cause what happens, what happens when the office space gets vacated? Right, so the office space vacates, then what happens?
They can.
We're at the office space again?
It's grandfathered office space. But moment, right, at that point, you can only turn it into either grandfathered office or the question becomes, is Fred saying, oh, the other option, it's a residential zone, make residential. But what Fred's saying is you, you already have two units, you, right, you'd be making a third unit.
Correct.
So it becomes this awkward space.
What's our percentage cap again on the ADU space can be no more than?
Thousand square, thousand square feet detached.
Or as a percentage.
Seven hundred.
What's the percentage of the living space of the main dwelling?
I don't think there is a percentage.
I think there is. It must be no more than thirty percent.
Thirty percent, yeah.
Yes, you're right, sorry.
This is, this is, this is seventy percent of the, um, I think that, I think it fails on that measure alone.
No, it doesn't.
No? Nine hundred square feet?
The, the square footage of the principal residence is one thousand nine hundred and fifty-two square feet. The way the ADU language is, is written, it's thirty percent of the principal, the principal structure plus the ADU. So when you make that calculation.
Yep.
The maximum size of the ADU is actually eight hundred and thirty-six square feet.
How big is this one? Seven something?
It's six hundred, six thirty-one.
Oh, I was, I was thinking it was nine hundred. I thought, I thought they were asking for a nine hundred square foot ADU. Okay, they're asking for six hundred and thirty.
Six thirty-one.
So it's that current use.
It's storage above the garage.
So it's a, so it's a, so when, when the office closes and you can't, that means you can't lease it out. If the, if Ken moves out, Ken takes his office out of the building and retires and leaves the Florida, right, they're not allowed to lease it out to somebody else, which is not a right.
For resident? Right, that would be the other issue.
So it's tripped.
The ADU does need to be certified on a yearly basis. So if.
So he retires and.
Right.
So you sign a lease, you sign a lease tomorrow. He retires, retires Valentine's Day. What do you do?
It wouldn't need to be certified again until, until the following January?
There's not no right to put in.
So there is a provision in the regulations that.
What's that noise?
It's on the TV or something.
Yeah, it's the computer on the TV. There is a provision within the ADU regulations that, that allows the ADU to exist on a property for, for up to three years where there is no owner occupancy of the property as long as the owner can assure the, the continued maintenance of the property.
But it has to be vacant, I thought.
That's an R A, that's an R A.
That's an R A, right? The property, it says here, the property is to be owner occupied, comma, meaning that the record owner of the property must reside in either the principal dwelling or the accessory dwelling unit. The record owner shall be required to file an initial affidavit at the time of application, testing to compliance with this provision and shall thereafter submit an annual affidavit acknowledging continuing compliance. By special permit from the planning and zoning commission, an owner may be allowed not to occupy the site for up to three years due to unusual and or unforeseen circumstances, provided the owner demonstrates to the commission how the property will be properly maintained, as if it were owner occupied.
Okay, so then this, you just turn it into a special permit application.
Correct. They'd have to, no, they'd have to come in for public hearing.
They'd have to come back if, if they were.
If that was the case, that, that's, that wouldn't be the, the current case if the commission agrees that the owner occupancy of the property is met by the business owner occupying the property.
This is one of the ones that we need, we need, I don't, I don't think this was envisioned when we did this.
That's a unique situation for sure.
Well, that's why it's here.
Yeah.
I think the problem is the multiple uses, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
The, the idea is that ADU would be an accessory unit to a single-family residence.
So that's my backdoor apartment.
Those, I mean. You're always a contrarian. That's fine. You're allowed to be.
Yep. No, I, you know, maintenance is our concern. Obviously it's actively used and it'll be well maintained, I'm sure, always has to. Fact that he uses an office rather than resides there when there's a residence upstairs. And so there'll be two on the block. That, that, that's okay, but it's good.
So there's, but there's three.
It's not, no one said it's affordable.
There's three principal uses.
That's where I have a hangup, is that there's three principal uses.
Correct. It's, it's not affordable, but it's housing that is affordable, not affordable housing. I keep turning up, but I, I hear you. Adam, what do you think?
I don't think that I have a problem with it. If you own your property, you should be able to do something like this on it. I, I get the issue because it's weird that it's an office use as opposed to just somebody having an office in their house kind of thing. It's got affronted, it's got spaces. But if it were a dentist that were living here, you know, and the first floor was half the dental shop and they were living with their family in the other half, and then they wanted to put ADU on their garage, like, I would say that's fine too, you know?
That's two, that's two.
Yeah, they're not living there.
We got three, he's not living there.
The owner's not living here.
You just, you just.
If the owner was living in the house and had an office in part of the house, I would, I'd be with you. I would totally be with you on that.
Yeah, but it's, I mean, somebody's there, somebody's living there.
Yeah, yeah, but the idea was to, to, to have the owner occupied.
Somebody's not owner occupied, then, then by regulation he can't, can't go.
I, I have a hangup with the three.
I've got a hangup with the three.
There's only two uses. Just two residences and enough.
But there's three distinct parties there. And, and it to me, it, to me, my, my issue was I didn't want this just turned into invest, like investor type properties. It smells like that to me. It just feels like way to me.
And then again, it's condo and it's sold off in three separate pieces and you've got, really.
We put that in that they can't condo it, right? That's part of our regulations. For the ADUs, we've, we've said explicitly, we put that in, I remember that.
Okay.
But we, we put it in, but we haven't been challenged in court.
Fair.
True.
I, I, I'm, I'm a no.
So that, that's, you're a no. You're a no. You two guys are a yes. Okay, Mr. Epple, you are here. Would you like to speak?
Sure.
Out of the ordinary, but I'm very courteous person.
Yeah.
And I don't want to be disrespectful in any way.
Really, you listen? Okay, thank you. So Kent Epple, I'm the owner of the building.
You've been in town for a trillion years.
What's that?
You've been in town for a trillion years, have a very good reputation.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, we hit forty years, so been here a while. Yeah, it is an unusual situation. Obviously, we started down this road before the ADU was even approved. Kind of Fred and I were talking about it and then when it was all spelled out, the exact concern you had came up. So I guess one of my thoughts is obviously, you know, my son is in the business too. The plan is to, to kind of keep that space and use it as we use it. Could, you know, part of, I've had three of my kids live in that space because it's hard to find anything that these kids can afford to live in, right? So it's been in the above.
In the above, and it upsells half of the house.
Right, right. You know, they get out of college, they, you know, they need a place to stay that's, that's close until they get their feet on the ground, right? So it's, it's worked out well for that and right now I've got, you know, just by chance, it's a, it's a friend of the family who is downsizing and needed something affordable in town. And that's kind of what I see this as, as a way, you know, to have some reasonable units versus all these new units that are just, no, no one can touch those unless you're making some serious money.
My college daughter lives at my house too.
Yeah, so, so the, the thought is if something like this can be worked out is to, you know, obviously I don't want to spend the money to, to do what I've got to do to make this an ADU if it's like, you know, too many strings attached. But I thought maybe a reasonable thing that Fred and I talked about is if I sold the building, that the front would be a single-family residence in order to keep the ADU or the ADU goes away yearly thing like you're saying, right? And the building keeps the, the office and above if it's not in my family name.
So would you take that a step further and say that you wouldn't have leases out to more than one person? One person that's not related to you?
Um.
So you're not having a rusty.
Cause you have three tenants now.
Yeah, you're not having two distinct separate tenants that are not related to you?
I, I can't, I mean, yeah, I mean, I can't.
You know what I'm trying to, you heard what my concerns are is.
Right.
I don't, I really, I was very careful. I didn't want these ADUs to become into, attract investors to come into this town and start carving up properties.
Right, but if I kept my business, whether it's with me or my son, kind of in continual, in the business state there and those two units, I, I can't guarantee there could be family members there for the, you know.
Well, that, that was, I guess, that's why I asked the question because it was right after Stephen. You made that most of the time. Somebody from your family has been living in one of.
Well, right now it's a friend of the family, not, but anyway. So I thought the only reasonable solution, you know, with the hangup would possibly be if it got sold to an outside member, the main house, and then it would be a compliant ADU anyway. The main house would turn into a single-family home.
Yep.
With the owner occupied so they could keep the ADU. That otherwise, just, it's right now, if I'm owning it, it's that kind of, am I owner occupied because it's my business? It's that fine line of where are we with that?
And the kids, I mean, is that, is that the same if the business goes out as well? So let's say you cease your business operations.
Yeah.
It would then convert into a full single-family.
I'd love to see the deed on this property.
Or, or the, the ADU would go away, right?
It's, and you just put, you put fifty grand into making an ADU and you just throw it out the window.
Right.
I mean, like Don Sibellio did my house. Man just, gentleman just passed away. He had ops on the post road for years. He moved into above his garage at his, at his son's house because he sold the business to his son. Fox Hill Builders, they just shut down their office and now he's running a small space on top of it. I get it, the business changes, right? Does, does the next owner of your business be the son of somebody else? Do they want, you know, a thousand square foot office space, you know, on the same shoes like that? You don't know. You don't know the answer.
What I'm saying is.
How do, how do we, how do we craft it that says if the, if the building, if the property sells, then you have to switch it to a single-family residence? I don't know how we trigger that. I mean, I'm not going to be here in three years, you know, then.
Well, if there's a yearly, you have a yearly, what, what, in there it says every year you kind of have to re-certify.
It would have to go along with the, with the land records, uh, be detached to the deed to say, you know, if you sell this property, it's, you know.
It's just so easy to abuse though.
It is.
It's so easy to what?
Abuse. Once it's built, right, no matter what you say you're gonna do. So, so in the example where the, where the business moves out and you say, okay, I'm going to convert the ADU back to storage space, it's, it's just going to turn into an illegal apartment. So it's not going to get converted back to storage space. No, no offense to you, but that's just what people do.
It's happened before.
The next owner, the next owner will.
It's the design person that's, that's on the post road. They keep putting apartments upstairs, we keep pulling them out.
Well, there's one we, we dug, we deal with. It's a structure that's existed for fifty years. And, you know, we're constantly chasing and inspecting, did you put in another kitchen? Did you put in a kitchen? The neighbor, you know, people call, the lights are on, go investigate. There's people living there. They're just there last week. People living here, not living here. It's been going on for.
Forced to live there.
Forty years, off and on.
I mean, there's a bunch of them in town.
Yeah.
And we all know it. Everybody knows it. You see a house that's got four electric meters on it? It's not a single-family house. I don't care what you say, it's not a two-family house.
I'm, I'm sure there is.
And, and that street, because it's changed over time, it's, it's, it's good. I get it. My whole thing on this ADU thing was I wanted those people to quote unquote, come out of the shadows, you know, and, and register the house, but why would somebody do it? I can't. And the only time that we really ever go into houses is during the rebound. You know, cause you get a letter from the rebound people, we want to go into your house and check it out. And that's when the thing happens.
Yeah.
Dave Keating, loving to death, he wasn't getting kicked those people out, you know? I, I just don't know how you, I don't know how you fix it. I don't know how you craft it.
I see both sides. I mean, obviously there's illegals and stuff, but then you don't know if it's done right. It, does it have smoke detectors? Does it have all this? This is a legitimate unit that there's a need for, right? Cause everything else is so up here. So anyway, I, I understand the concern and, you know.
I'd like to see the deed, um, cause I, I'm, it's reminding me of a property that I looked at down in Stamford that was commercial, um, and, and attached to the deed was, it was remained, it was in a residential area. It could be commercial, provided the chain didn't get broken. But if, if the chain broke and there was somebody that chose to use it as residential, then it could never go back to a permitted commercial use. So I'd like to see the deed on this, to see if there's a way in the deed that lends itself to the request that you're asking and being able to extinguish it cleanly with a transfer title. So I, I'd like to see that.
We can't have, we can't, sure, we can't enforce a transfer title, you know?
No, 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 no. I'm just saying if there's a natural trigger in that deed around the commercial, not commercial side, that would help aid us to, if he in fact was not using it that way, it would naturally lend itself to extinguishing and having to convert that to a full, full family residence. The first, the first building.
When does, when does the grandfather of the business end?
It doesn't, does it?
It never ends.
Okay, so what about if someone wants to come in there and change it into a spa, like every other house that's on the post road? That's post road.
Well, it couldn't, it's an office use. My understanding it's been office for fifty years, Ken?
I, I don't know the whole history. I just hear, hear and there from people go, oh yeah, I was there, you know, whatever.
So if you change it from office use to.
But I guess part of what I'm saying is if, if, if we had in the deed to trigger that, to basically get it to a completely compliant thing, if, if it was out of my name and my business wasn't there, it would be a compliant one-family house on the front and compliant ADU. It would completely meet your guidelines.
And if, if you make that concession, you might be changing the value profile of your property.
Right.
So that's something you need to consider.
Yes and no, because right now I don't, the ADU's not there, so.
Yeah.
The, the question is, is it more valuable as a single-family home in an ADU? Or is it more valuable as a two-bedroom apartment? But knowing that if I go down this road, I put all this money in to make it an apartment, that I, I.
You're willing to make that trade when you want to, when you want to sell.
You, you might clean, you know, the whole property gets cleaned up to a compliant piece. I guess that's the carrot.
Right, I just don't know how you trigger that.
Can it be put in a deed, right, when it's sold that this is?
We have regular deeds.
Yeah, we can put a notice in the land records. We do it all the time for, for zoning approvals.
True.
And then it, it's also a little bit of. And then it, it's also a little bit of, you know, and I'm, I'm sensitive to what you say, but it's a little bit of, right? Whether your lawyer does their job or not for closing, right? I mean, it's, it's not on the realtors to figure it out, it's not necessarily on the seller to disclose it, right? There's a whole-
Would it be captured by a title search?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A good title search, yeah.
I've captured things that title searches haven't caught. Like, did you know?
You're sitting there closing and you-
Yeah, what?
So I, 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 I don't, I don't necessarily share your concern on that level, but I, I think that that's a good compromise, right? Is, look, if, if, if I decide to sell this or I change it, it goes to a conforming, um, I'd like to, I'd like to, my personal thing, you know, I'm trying to take the church role, but I'd like to punt it and look at the regulations and spend a little time in-
Put this on the next agenda for the twenty fifth.
Cause I think there is something that could be, in my opinion, could be approved there, but it's, we've got to, got to get language right, we've got to get a notice for land records that's right.
Well, look at the priority. And I guess the only thing I would ask, if we're going down this road, and obviously I got to make that financial decision, what makes the most sense, um, is because my son is in the business, um, and as long as it stays in that Epley name versus like, okay, it gets triggered because I'm not going to live forever and, you know, at some point, at least he, if it stays in the Epley name, that-
You are a descendant.
Something like that.
A descendant, cause it may not be, you might have a daughter.
Right, right, true.
You could bring in a partner and become Sibellio and Epley Construction, you know, right?
But, but the, the spirit is, is that that's satisfying, the spirit of the owner occupied nature of our, our requirements, is that, you know?
I get it, that's why we're here, obviously, to talk about it. It's a little unusual, um, and, you know, I guess part of what could be the, the comfort for you is knowing that, that it could potentially at flip turn into a more conforming situation than it is now.
Yeah.
Because when we did this whole ADU thing, it, it came down from the powers that be, wherever it is, it's, oh, it's going to be new, affordable housing for people. And, and if you buy the single-family house that's on that street and it doesn't have an ADU, it's worth a million bucks, and the one next door, same size as everything else, and it doesn't have an ADU, which one's worth more? This one's a million dollars worth an ADU, this is a million dollars worth of garage. I'd pay more for yours so the value goes up, right? Then I would pay one that doesn't because it didn't have to take a name. That's why I proved like, oh, you know, it's going to be create inexpensive housing. I'm like, no, it's, it's going to raise property values and it's going to make the area more expensive.
Yeah.
But it is what it is, and that, that's not what we're talking here, but that's just, that's not, but if we could, we could definitely punt it and think about it again and keep moving it, but it's, the, the spirit of the law is supposed to be, you know, two u- two uses out of piece property, not through. And, and if, it is-
What is the third use you're talking about?
It's, it would be, it's two rental apartments plus the business.
So that's two uses.
But it's three leases.
Who cares, we're talking about use, use as residence versus commercial.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't envision that, man.
But, you know, I, I do feel the, the more reasonable unit should have tough, tough things on, I think, I think the ADU thing is a, is a good start at having some of that solved, but-
We did this originally, it was always you wanted your kid come home from college, live above your garage. And I don't want them to come and go, and then go above the garage. I'd said it many times, I lived in an apartment called Fifty-Six-Eight, I lived in the ground floor of my parents' house, at my own door, I blocked in my father's car, but I had a kitchen because I didn't want to come.
Yeah.
But my brother didn't know if he was there, my father didn't know he was there. I didn't see them, they didn't see me. I didn't pay rent either.
Yeah. So, okay, so-
So moral of the story is don't rent and see Mulvaney.
And Kate is not paying rent either. It doesn't job them how we're here.
We're his scot-free kids.
No rent and you gotta cook for them, it's brutal.
It is brutal, we'll see.
Alrighty.
Let's keep, let's keep working on it, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you too. Is there anything else you need from me?
Well, if, if we're going to do this land records thing or search the deed or something like that, can you get a copy of the deed? Make it easier for Fred.
Thanks, pick that up, yeah. Okay, alright, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's why we did this.
Alright, thanks, uh, have a good night.
You too. Alright, next on my note, proposed detached ADU for Julie Pagnosi at eighty-seven Old Kings Highway South, ADU twenty-five dash two. I printed out this one too, um, it looks like it. Why don't you explain it to me, Fred, before you, what we got?
Yeah, so, uh, this, this is a proposal for an ADU at eighty-seven Old Kings Highway South. This is, this lot is, is within the R-one-half residential zone. The owner of the property owns a half-acre lot, and the proposal is to convert the existing second-floor living space above the detached garage to an ADU by adding a new kitchen to the space. Would be seven hundred and seventy-six square feet. The principal residence at the front of the property is two thousand seven hundred and fourteen square feet, so the, uh, the square footage of the ADU is, is within its limits relative to thirty percent rule on the principal residence and-
For the house.
There are three parking spaces within the garage below the ADU, so that meets the parking spaces for both the, uh, the principal residence and the one-bedroom ADU above.
Okay, so, so it, it's conforming half-acre, sorry, in our, in our regulations, trip because it's as-of-right and one-acre zone, it's not as-of-right and half-acre.
Did, did this, did all this just get added? When I looked at this earlier, I didn't see anything other than the narrative. So I'm, my apologies, but I-
There were some additional documents uploaded to the application, I believe, yesterday.
Yeah, February three, eight, twelve.
In the evening. The ADU checklist was, the ADU checklist, the, the property record card as well as, um-
Where was that uploaded? That today?
No, that was uploaded prior.
Was it on today? Only I got was the print for the house. The survey and the name.
Yeah, that's all it's on.
It, it's, it's on that.
And, and the, um, the checklist. You not seeing that on there?
No.
Really?
Here's the printout, that's why I was asking the eleven files, and there's only three of them filled in. There's eleven files, which is eleven slots, and there's three things on the, on the website, there's three attachments.
Just three. Just three, yeah.
The budget narrative, the old, the, these are Old Kings Highway survey, and the two eighty-seven-
Why do you have that attached to it, Fred?
Um-
Whatever, it's okay, so-
I mean, I can circulate this to you, but what do you need, Mike?
I was just wondering if it's like behind something else in here or?
Okay, so, to be, how big is the ADU going to be?
Seven seventy-six.
Seven seventy-six.
I, just as a general comment, I think it'd be useful if the plans we see incorporate that number, I don't, I haven't seen that in either of these plans suggested. And it's the first question I look for is, you know, how big is this thing?
Yeah.
So they could put that on these plans.
Yeah, we can, we can have, yeah, we can add the actual square footage, the architectural drawings.
Yeah, so it's going to be on this thing?
Yes, correct.
And can I believe you do the same thing in yours and everywhere in the future?
Yeah.
Yes, and I just hit smart print.
So this is an ADU because they've got a kitchen, I guess, they're not sleeping here.
How is this staircase that gets into the second floor?
They will.
Yeah, so the, the, the building, the outbuilding is, is built into the, the slope at the back of the property, so the upper floor of the ADU is accessed from the rear at-grade.
Okay.
So there's sort of landscape steps up to the, up to the back, and you just enter the ADU through the back.
So it's not a massive staircase that it looks like?
Hanging off the garage.
Correct.
That was, that's what was one of the, I think, the netters coming.
Those are the things with the regulations is-
Yeah, yeah, because I see the stairs and they're on the outside of the envelope, but not to beg you the question, how is-
You're saying these stairs are built into the hill?
Yeah, they're land use stairs.
Yep.
Okay.
And then there's a small little, like, back porch that's got like a three-step thing?
Yeah, what's the, the porch is called a ramp on the survey.
Yeah. So Julie is-
We can have Ms. Pagnosi answer these questions.
Julie is here this evening as well, if, if, um-
Let's go past, let's get over the parking thing first, the access and parking and blocking and whatnot? So you can get two cars in and out?
Right, there's, there's-
The guy in the backside, you could park, but the guy in the front blocked, they moved that guy in the front?
I mean, there's three garage bays in, in the, in the existing, sorry, four garage, four garage bays in the existing garage, so that meets the requirement for both the principal residence and the ADU as well.
What about access, the parking driveways? Remember the one we had, two curved cuts? There's so many parks in the house and blocks the driveway for the second car to get around it. That lives in the house in the front, they block the driveway because the guy in the back get out.
Probably not.
That was one, that was one of the, the conditions.
Well, in theory, I mean, they, they should be able to park in the garage, right? So there's four, four spots in the garage, right? And we're requiring one being designated to the ADU, correct?
Right, but the, the, the question I'm asking is, is can the guy, if there's, if the guy in the front's blocking the driveway, can the guy in the, can the guy in the back get out?
Yes, I hear what you're saying, but in theory, they, they shouldn't have to block the driveway as a, as, because there's other areas for somebody to pull up and park on the crushed stone drive in the back and still have maneuverability. So it's not a, uh, an inevitability based on the design. Sure, the, the access from the drive is one length or one width, so in theory, if anybody stopped there, they'd block somebody.
Right.
Um, but that's-
And that's why the, the commission wanted the ability to review the parking from, from the get-go, right? Is to, is to make sure that you don't create a situation where you have someone blocking someone else, right? There's enough space, there's enough parking on the site to accommodate both of the units, the front and the ADU and the principal residence.
I hundred percent agree, but I just, I have a problem with the blocking. If the guy, if the guy parks in the driveway in front of the house, and that's the side door to the house, the guy in the back blocked it.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't-
Cause we did this in one of yours, you know, there was a circular driveway or something like that? And you were like, and I, and you were worried about the guy getting blocked in, I said, there's two driveways. She's got two curved cuts.
I was worried about the, I think an ambulance getting in or something, but, yeah.
And what we just approved with, with the grandmother lives upstairs, that's a double wide driveway.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. I don't know what the, what the Ms. Pagnosi uses as the main entrance to her, her principal home here, whether it's, whether she enters through the rear of the property or the front of the property or the side of the property, I'm not, I'm not sure, but-
But I'm worried about the next guy. This is in perpetuity. I kid, I block in my kid every day on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, she can't get out, she goes into my-
So are you envisioning up an additional parking pad area beyond the crushed stone drive past the four-car garage so people can, you know?
No, I just want to be able to get the guy in the back and not get blocked in.
Okay.
Yeah, especially if he's paying rent, he's going to expect not to get blocked in.
And it, it, the size of a four-car garage and the corresponding parking pad that's in front of that is pretty ample. So that, in theory, that shouldn't have to happen.
In theory, it shouldn't, right? But that's like when we approved tandem parking spaces over at the Heights, tandem parking spaces inside, you know, Alcor's Building, they're all owned by the same dude. The husband blocks in-
But that's when it's designed where it's only tandem and there's no other. This is tandem, this is single width to get in, and then it opens up to maneuverability where somebody could be parked on the crushed stone pad and not be blocking access to-
Let's say you have a, let's say you have a Super Bowl party and there's three cars blocking the driveway. I'm dead serious, you know? And the guy in the back, cause I'm not running your party, I'm running my own.
That's a landlord lessy little tussle that they have to figure out.
When we approved the grandmother in the back-
But the site, a site to accommodate for relief.
There was just, there was a clear shot.
Yeah, but you can make the argument like, what if the owner parks diagonally across the front of it and blocks him in because they got to drive around the house, like, it's the same thing here, there's one of your-
That one had, that one had three, it had like a sixteen-foot wide curb cut. I'm throwing it out there, you get, you know, if you guys want to improve it, it's fine by me, but that's why we-
Well, we want it to be beyond the setback line, so it's not like in the front, and so it's clearly beyond, it's in the back of the property, it's-
There's a huge turning radius around this crushed stone board, there's a four-car garage, and there's plenty of parking back there.
I don't disagree with you.
I think it's a common problem with a half-acre lot. Let's put it again.
What is?
The driver, the single-
Yeah.
Single main driveway.
Yeah, and that's why I-
That's why it's not approved.
And that's why I-
That's why it's not as-of-right, that's why we made it that way.
But I think we have the cure here, so no problem. I'm fine with this.
Yeah. And it sounds like there's four yeses and one you're blocking, yeah.
You're blocking, yeah.
I think you're reliving your youth.
Exactly.
I'm saying my father woke me up. He's my father, he woke me up.
You're reliving it.
At six thirty, boy gets his seven-odd degree off that, move your damn car.
I mean, I don't think it's unreasonable if this were leased out, that that'd be like a condition of a lease agreement that, you know, can't block access kind of thing.
I didn't have a lease.
We can zone around, it's not being a jerk. Is that part of the zone, is that a regulation?
Stupidity.
We're working on laws.
Okay.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Calls in favor? Calls opposed?
My kid saw that.
Motion passed, so I go, okay.
So we're drafting an approval with, what's an effectively approved?
No, it's, it's-
Different purposes if it was not officially-
This is the general meeting, we don't-
Oh, that's right, that's right.
There's no resolution.
There's no resolution.
She's set.
That's me.
Yeah, you're all set.
Thank you, I just want to let you know, my son is a volunteer firefighter in town, and he's applying to, he just received all of his congressional letters to the Air Force, Naval Academy, and his intention is always to stay here, and here he is.
No.
And support our town, and this is meaningful to him. And he loves this town with your one hand.
Now you feel that?
There you go.
You want to change your vote?
No, you want to reopen that up for another vote?
I'm going to give her a hug.
Make sure you don't block him, block the driveway.
He knows, lights out, ten o'clock, that's it.
Chairman, potential firefighter in bed.
He's going to be in the back, oh, he's going to be in the back.
He works with Mr. Viti, he loves this town.
Mike Keating's great.
He works hard.
He sure does.
So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much for your surprise. Thank you, Ms. Ma'am. All righty, next item on the agenda, Chairman's report including accomplishments.
So can I tell him he gets a stay?
Yes.
Thank you folks, good night, thank you for your hard work, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next Chairman's report initiatives and accomplishments. Jeremy and, and I did this a couple of years ago and I brought it up once. We did a document, this was from 2001, it was, it was.
Twenty one.
Twenty one, yes. And what we wanted to do, what we did in the last two years and what we want to do next year, Jeremy did a draft of it, um, again. He'd have it over a little bit, so you guys didn't get it in your package yet, um, but he's going to go over it one more time and then bring it out next week.
We'll have it for your next meeting on the 25th.
And if there's anything that you think you want to put on our agenda, what we want to accomplish this year? Can I just mention a couple of things that are.
Sure.
Be on there now. Some of the ideas around here like, it's initiatives is plan of conservation development is one, the zoning citations is one. Investigate, plan bans on other items in town that we may not want to like. Review these accessory dwelling units in the future. The one thing that came up and I, I said to these guys is a sign on a piece of property that says this sign's under application. They do it in Stanford and they do it in Westchester where there's signs on it says they get them.
They do it in Norwalk, so.
Yeah, there's a public hearing on this. And that's just for people like, oh, I didn't know this thing was under application until after the fact, where you put a sign on it. In, in Portland, the signs are three feet by four feet and they're orange and they're reconstruction signs. They're kind of huge and rock, they cut a piece of paper like this, it's on a plastic thing and they, they stapled it to a tree and you can't see it.
Of course, we do send a letter to everybody who lives within 100 people.
Right, so it's something, it's something to talk about, I'm looking to, in other towns. And the other thing I wanted, wanted to look at as, as an initiative is to see where we are relative to the 830 G more oriental. Everyone keeps asking about it, how, where we are, we've never counted any numbers. It's hard to count the numbers because you don't know. But there's, there's a lot of stuff going on. So that's, that's what that piece of puzzle is, that item is. The other thing I want to talk about real quick is, um, the legislative session started up in Hartford, um, this week. And I've said this a million times, the, not a million times, but enough times, the bill on housing and live work ride and T O D. They dropped the bills on Wednesday. Fred either gets some, there's maybe a tickler in your computer or something like that that tells you it drops. They drop them on Wednesday. I usually get it from Fred on Thursday. If I have, if I can time, I'll read it and then if there's something I want to talk to Fred about, they're off on Friday. You have to sign up to give testimony by 3 o'clock on Sunday. So I have to call Fred over the weekend when he's out with his kid and say, hey, can we talk about this for five minutes? Land is getting a half an hour, it wasn't five minutes. But, and then I, then John Zagroski wants to do testimony and whatnot. We may draft a letter again to put in testimony, we don't know, we know when testimony closes?
It's not clear, no.
Yeah, we don't know. So you have to sign up, if you want to testify in person.
Do whatever you want.
Yeah, if you want to, if you want to sign up, if you want to speak in person, you have to sign up by 3 o'clock on, on, um, Sunday. I think you and I spoke at 3:00 or 8:00. And I, and you said, oh, Mr. Window. So I didn't testify, John Zagroski did, he wrote a letter, we gave him some stuff. The bill that I printed out that I had with me is basically an act concerning transit oriented communities. At the end of the day, and I spoke to some other lawyers and other people that are smart about this stuff, it, it really doesn't affect Darien. But these bills change over time. Because to me, this was an opt in provision. So if you call yourself a transit oriented town, then you can get a transit or create a transit oriented district. And if you do that, then you can opt in to get money from the state for infrastructure. So I don't know how you become a transit oriented town, but I don't think Darien would, would do that. I'll bet it's us, it would be worse like the, the, or somebody. But this bill, which is, I don't know, 14, 15 pages, um, that's how it was crafted. And there's, there's other towns like, you know, for example, Bridgeport or Fairfield, they want to be a transit oriented town because they have a lot of stuff they want to build. So if they opt in, they create a district, they can go to the state, you know, where we have transit oriented, can you give us money to build a parking garage? So that's, I think, the good part about it. Some other people looked at it, um, from a really high level and said, this is, you know, really bad, really bad. I don't think that's the case, you know, really thinks it affects us. But the first selectman, he, Fred and I gave him some bullet points to be, to talk to, numbers to talk to. And the thing that I, I, I didn't see it live, but I thought it was a little bit sad. He, um, he said, in the last three years, we've created 29 affordable housing units. For the next three years, we had 46 coming online, right, if everything gets, if everything gets built. And we've also added a million dollars to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I think those are three great bullet points of what we're doing for town. Supposedly, one of the people on the panel said to him, you've only done 29 affordable units, you know, and you think that's good? And then wherever the gentleman, wherever the woman the gentleman was from, um, they built zero affordable houses in the last four years. I, I think it's kind of unfair, but it is what it is. So Fred's really monitoring this stuff, he's got way up to speed on it. He's got, works on weekends reading this stuff and understands it. I also looped in the, um, Amy Zabatakas from, um, the Planning and Zoning Housing Committee. So she's on the case now, she's a great, um, real estate attorney, so she's on the emails, I think you sent this to her, right?
Yeah, she has a copy of it.
She got copies of this and she got the, she got the, the notice too that it was posted and she couldn't find it. But we had some meeting, Fred and I, she'd spoken and I guess you explained it to her. So that's something that it, it takes a lot of time to look at it. I don't know if we're going to change the way they do business up there, but it is what it is. Jamie, um, Zonic, who's on our commission, she spoke also, I think she came on at, after 11:00 PM last night. And she apparently, it's, I don't know what she said, I didn't watch it, I was, I was asleep. But she was going to talk about, um, the town planning conservation development. And I, I think what, and I don't, I don't know what, I don't know what she said, but I think her concept is right. If we're doing a town planning conservation development and we say we want to make this area dense, we don't like that area, you know, an office building in, in the Corbin District and change this and this and this and spend, what, $150,000 to do a study on that? And then the state comes in later and goes, no, we think you should do that, 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 why do we do town planning conservation? No.
Why is that a requirement?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I mean, if we just spent 216 months looking at it and then all of a sudden some entity that comes in and says, oh, you have to make. And what, the thing was again, it was, this bill talks about a half mile from the train station or from the transit news, right? Was it a half mile or a mile?
Yeah, but.
All of them?
It's a half mile. Yeah, it, it basically creates. So this is, first of all, an opt in bill, right?
It's an opt in, nobody really realized that till we got to it, but Amy picked it up in two seconds.
Yeah, so Steve, Steve's correct in that it doesn't necessarily affect the town of Darien and that, and that the town doesn't need to opt into this bill if it does in fact. Pass and get adopted as law. But it essentially requires communities that opt into this new law to create a transit district or a T O D district around one of their transit stops. So either Nuroton Heights, in, in Darien's case, either Nuroton Heights or the downtown station or any one of our bus stops in town. And it allows communities to set their own zoning to create these transit districts. And these communities work with the Office of Responsible Growth, which is a new office that was created during the last legislative session to basically sign off on the scope of the zoning that the Planning and Zoning Commission comes up with and the, the size and area of the district. And.
You can zone, you can upzone it to some big number.
Right.
Like a 30 units an acre or something like that.
Right, it, it's, it's essentially up to the commission how, how, you know, how the commission wants to handle that district.
Then you apply for money. I mean, like Westport might do it, Westport's got, if you go down exit 17 or 18, that whole piece of land that's at the bottom of the exit ramp, that thing is either on the market for sale or just sold, right? They have to build underground parking, they have to build this, they're doing like a Corbin District right there, it's really, really expensive. So they may make that a district and apply for the state to build all the underground parking. I worked at a deal up in, in New Canaan years ago.
Is that the Sherwin Island connect or the one prior?
One prior.
To Sagatuck.
Down the hill.
Where the Sagatuck train, the train is right there.
If you go there right now, there's a million boats.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
On the piece of land.
Yeah.
It looks dumb, they want to get those boats out, put apartments at a hotel there. And some guy, he bought it and said, you mind if somebody else, the ugly building with the spaghetti up on the roof?
Yes.
And that's fine, that's probably true. New Canaan also, New Canaan, they bought a building that was, was the old Avalon headquarters that Bankwell was in for a while. Next to New Canaan, years ago, I don't get too deep into the weeds, that was called New Canaan Lumber. The town bought it, Avalon put it on account of the town that it buys from Avalon. They have a plan there to put in a decked parking lot and it costs like eight million bucks. That New Canaan only has, they got like $2 million from the state and they, there, there, there's a funding gap of $4 million. So they could apply for it and to get the $4 million bucks from the state for the infrastructure and make that a T O D district. They could do it, so it's not a black and white, it, it's, but the way the bill was written was this. And I also think it's kind of unfair, there's certain towns that kind of could, that aren't that served by training. So how, they, they don't even have a shot at this.
So you can opt in for a particular project, you don't have to opt in for the whole scheme evermore, you can just opt in.
I think you're opting for a district.
Yeah, you opt in for the, for the district itself with.
The T O D district.
The T O D district, which is created by the commission.
But first you have to be a T O D community.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a three step process, a T O D community, a T O D district and then whatever plan you're giving it and then you gotta ask them for money, which is.
But I also got the sense that you don't control your own destiny there, it's, you have this joint, uh, you know, somebody else in Hartford that's saying, well, in order to get this money, we, you need to do this.
Correct.
This is what, this is what you need to do in this district.
Right.
Which may or may not align.
Right.
To your community's, you know, goals, I don't know.
It's discretionary, it's discretionary funding that the town still needs to apply for this discretionary funding. It's just the communities that have established these districts are given.
Priority.
Are, are given priority, that's exactly right.
And that was a lot of the testimony is, what do you mean by priority? Well, if you do this, they're going to put you in the front of the line for certain grants. And so Fred and I discussed earlier today, what grants does the Dairy, does the town of Darien get? And you can imagine that when we compete for grants with other communities, we don't always win.
When we did Allen O'Neil the first time, they get the traffic funds out of the state, they, they applied four years in a row?
Well, there's certain types of grants that are mentioned that we're going to have to look at. But the one, uh, there's something called a steep grant, just small town economic something grant. And Darien has received some of those in the past, they're not huge numbers, but it was something. And one town testified, wait a minute. We're a small town, we don't have a lot of money and now what you're saying is we're not going to be first in line. Well, we're not going to de-prioritize you. But we don't have water or sewer, you know, so they got.
It's wild, but, I mean, people are trying and, and Peter McGuinness from our EPC, he testified, Tracy Martin did, Peter Harrison, is he a, he's not a, a Desegregated Connecticut?
But he's with RPA, Regional Plan Association, but he's, he's certainly the lead because he was answering all the questions about the bill. So in effect, would you say he wrote the bill?
More or less, I mean, Regional Plan Association oversees desegregate Connecticut. It's like you can look at desegregate Connecticut as basically a, uh, an, an office under RPA.
So he was answering a lot of the questions about the bill during the legislative.
And then Maria, I forget her last name, from CT 1695, I think she spoke.
Vine Garden, yes.
The, the list comes out and there was 103 people on the list and it goes from 10:30 AM to 11, no, 3 AM.
After midnight last night.
So everyone gets to talk and it was weird, they had another thing going on at the same time, there were people talking about cats and dogs.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I, I didn't understand that.
There's a proposal to not allow people to sell cats and dogs.
Yeah, it was, and that's another dude, but the point, the point of the story is that the pecking order is also discretionary. The first people that speak are like Tracy Martin's folks. Is elected, the state elected officials and then town elected officials.
And then everybody else.
But I thought the chairman or like people of boards and commissions guys were up higher. The, the exact, like John Zagroski spoke number three, spoke third. So somehow or other, he's got horsepower and then I feel bad for.
For Jamie.
For Jamie, she spoke number 92.
Is there a timeline for each?
Yeah, three, I don't know.
Three minutes, three minutes, but they're a little.
Three minutes that the person can talk, but the, the, the guys up front can ask a million questions.
Which they, they did. So you talk for three minutes and then depending on who's asking.
They're running the hearing and they ask for it.
Yeah, some of the speakers who actually end up testifying end up, they're back and forth with, with the, um, with the members of, of the committee. An hour or hour and a half, maybe Pete, like Pete Harrison, the, the architect of the bill, right, is.
How late did you stay and watch this in the morning, seriously?
I, I wasn't up that late, but it's.
You were past nine.
He loves it, so.
I, I find it interesting.
So that's something I think you guys should be aware of, we are working on it, Fred's working on it, Jeremy's working on it. And you have to get up to speed on this document in 48 hours and includes weekends. So that's something I think that's important to us.
Thank you, Fred.
Yeah, thank you.
So is the governor more interested than he has been in the past?
He's, he, he has expressed, um.
He's into housing.
His support.
Keeps saying we need more housing.
For this in, in some respect, so if this, we have the feeling that if this crosses his desk, it will get signed.
Okay, then switching gears for a second, this was concerned transit oriented communities, wasn't there a live work ride one too?
Nothing.
Or no?
That, that's what it is.
Oh, this is one of the same?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I just want you guys to know that we, we might put in a letter, I'm not really sure. You know, and if the deadline's tomorrow at 9 o'clock, we definitely not. I know that, but if, if anyone has anything to do, if he wants to watch it, great. Then we also, the, 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 I think that piece of land that is on Heights Road, I think it's taken up a lot of these guys' time.
Two units that's underwater.
All the options.
Yeah, all the options on there, it's the one next to Lyria Liquor that's underwater where your car can float away.
Yes.
And then two office buildings next to it. You guys got one that doesn't encourage them.
Not a dozen, but, you know, what are we, for the past three, four weeks, what'd you say?
Yeah.
And I, I, for full disclosure, brokers call me on it and, and send me emails on it, I say, call Jeremy and tell him, here's his phone. You know, and, and, cause it's, I don't need to speak to anybody at the beginning, uh, without these guys and, and, you know, they, they, I always have told them, I said, whatever you're going to build there, you're going to make it simple because it takes 10 years to, this was 10 years to prove, that was 10 years to prove, that was 10 years to prove. You know, so don't be coming up with something, you maybe get, get approvals for a long time. I think that's kind of sort of it for me, unless anybody has any questions, directors report, Jeremy?
Yeah, these are basically letting you know what we're going to be talking about at the next meeting. What we're going to do is put together a chart of all the ADUs that we've looked at, approved by the commission, approved by staff, where are they? What, what are they all about, so you get a status update, it's been in effect for six months now, at least to get a sense of how many there are, where they are. Uh, stormwater manual, uh, Joe Canis of Time Bond has prepared a draft. We've sent it out to about 37 local engineers throughout Fairfield County, Westchester County. And Joe's going to have a Zoom call with them at the end of February to say, this is the report, this is what it talks about. Then we'll have Joe meet with this commission because that report would be the basis for any new zoning references on stormwater and even the subdivision regulations. So that's in the works, it's moving along. But we're going to get input and feedback from every, you know, the engineers that need to work with it, which is super helpful. And I think we're also going to bring it to the board of selection so they can understand what's going on. Our last thing which we'll talk about tonight, but more so in a couple of weeks, zoning citations. Town council has laid out the process for implementing this, it's got to go to the RTM, we'll bring it to you on the 25th. So you get a sense of what the steps are, if it's.
And these are people in violation of.
Right, so if you have a violation.
High fines.
There's an ability, right, what is the most.
20 grand first, first strike, 50 grand second strike.
That was one of the things they talked about in the legislative, is possibly raising that to whatever it is now, $50 a day.
50, you got to have some. You gotta add some euros.
But if it's a week, you know, that's.